Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City Council performing the housing functions of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. At this time, I'll turn this over to our City Manager Doug Robertson to handle the Employee or Employees of the Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is with great pleasure that I get to do this usually once a month, although I've slipped a few times and we've had to do a couple of them together. Because there's a lot of vacations scheduled for July, meetings can be a little bit sketchy as far as whether or not we're going to have them, especially when they neighbor July 4th, I decided to go ahead and do the June Employee of the Month along with the April and May Employees of the Month. So, the April Employee of the Month actually is a first. This employee actually was nominated by someone from outside our organization due to her hard work and dedication on the very successful chamber event, The Stride Ride and Glide at SCLA. From what I understand, she actually rode one of the courses as many as 10 times trying to make sure that it was easy enough for families to enjoy and actually came out to the actual mileage that the chamber was seeking. And then also was very cognizant of the longer 25-mile course to make it safe but still challenging to those bicyclists who do those longer distances. So, it's with great pleasure that I announce the April Employee of the Month is Michelle Rivas. Come on down, Michelle. Michelle is also the first part-time employee that we have that's earned the distinction as the Employee of the Month. So, we'll have to work out exactly how that -- how the benefits apply to a part-time employee, but we'll get that worked out real soon. As part of the award, she'll get a day off with pay. I'm not sure exactly what that looks like for a part-timer, but we'll get that sorted out. And then also a detail from Griner GMC Buick. So, thank you, Michelle. Our next Employee of the Month for May, actually, and similarly for June, we have a lot of employees in the city that work hard every single day that should be Employee of the Month every single month. And we don't always have someone who's gone so far over and above that there's a clear distinction, the way Michelle was, or the way, you know, the two guys that won Employee of the Month for, you know, restoring the big Victorville Bee, things like that. So, I have a somewhat lengthy list of some of our hardest-working employees who I will sprinkle in as the Employee of the Month when we don't have someone who's really gone over the top. The first one of those is from our Parks and Rec Division, Parks specifically, and they have, because of the council's priorities, they've been hit some of the hardest with some of the cuts at when it's budget time. And one of the key reasons that our parks still look as beautiful as they do, and one of the key reasons why the staff in that division are still working hard is because of this employee, the May Employee of the Month, is Dan McMurtry. Dan, come on down and get your work. Those two are interesting for me because I don't think I've actually personally met either of those employees. But the folks that they work with think very, very highly of them, so. The June Employee of the Month I have met, I see her most days. She is in our Records Division, and she is one of the key reasons why the city has been able to keep up with all of the requests for information from the public, from those that want to be critical, from those that are just doing research projects, and also be able to keep up with the information requests from the grand jury, from the SEC, from things like that, and keeps us in good stead with those agencies that are taking a look at us. It's a tremendous job, and it was really saddled on the Records Division as we went from three employees in that division down to two, and they were able to keep up with all of those requests on top of the growing number of requests from the public for just simple public information. That Employee of the Month for June is Susie Evans. Susie, thank you so much.
There is one other award that I haven't told anybody about except for maybe one or two people, actually. It's something that I've been considering and something I think that we need. We need to help continue to create our legacy as a city in honoring our employees. So, I took the liberty. The award, if you will, is going to be very similar as far as having a parking space and an extra day off, but also there will be a perpetual plaque hanging in City Hall with the name of the Employee of the Year. And I just happened to notice that the person that I selected as the Employee of the Year is in the audience today. I mentioned earlier the Records Division staff keeping up with all of those tremendous headaches that we've had from all these investigative agencies. We've been extremely cooperative. We have provided all of the information they want, generally in the timing that they want to the extent that that is physically possible. And it has really relieved me of a lot of the pressure that I would feel when we would get some new request for some insane number of items, you know, millions of pages of data. And, you know, as those things would come in, I would struggle a little bit with, hell, here we go again, you know, how are we ever going to get to this? And before I could worry very long, Lorraine Stevens would come in and tell me, okay, I've got half of it done, and, you know, we're going to get to the other half now, and then, you know, this date we'll get the rest of it. So, because of her perseverance and hard work, even, I don't recall exactly what holiday it was, but she and I were emailing back and forth on some holiday on some issue because she can't help but check her email when she's on vacation. But anyway, the Employee of the Year for this fiscal year is Lorraine Stevens.
I know, I've known Lorraine for many years. Jim, you're from the Water District? You are a great employee, and thank you for everything you do for the city. All right, we will now move into public comment, and I do have one public comment card. Robert Larabee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members. Came here tonight because I found out that I would be part of a unique group. That unique group is the group that addresses you at this time. So, I found out that I'd probably be the second or third person for a while. So anyways, I did want to make some comments to the council. I've been a resident of Victorville for almost two years now. It'll be two years in August. I have 30 years' experience in the architectural and construction field, so with that comes an experience dealing with various councils and commissions throughout Southern California, different governing agencies. And in those 30 years, my experience has told me that a lot of problems that come and dealing with them come to chaos and disorder and uncertainty. And during my two years here, I've experienced problems in the water department here and things not going the way they probably should go, should be run. Recently, I experienced a problem with the code enforcement department, which after I'm done, I'll go see George. And it's, you know, something that I think that as a citizen I should speak up to because as I do some research, I find that, you know, you know, well, let me back up a little bit. Chaos in these type of areas lead to lawsuits. And as I do some research, I find the city is subject to several lawsuits, which I find some of them are unnecessary. And then I find in reading that there's a potential new lawsuit facing the city if certain things aren't decided regarding a particular controversial business that plans to establish themselves in the city. And then I ask myself, well, what's the difference between them and the medicinal marijuana businesses we have allowed to be set up here? Or even a Walmart, a Super Walmart, which I frankly, you know, am for and against because of the fact that what it can do, but also I'm against it because of what it will do to small businesses. And I just wanted to encourage this council to be very careful in dealing with this. I know that the city attorneys had input and advised you, but I think because of the situation at hand, I'd like to make a personal recommendation as a city that the council, the city even look outside or on a city attorney for additional legal advice to these potential problems that might be facing the city. And with that, I thank you very much for hearing me, and I hope to see you all soon and see things get better here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no other public comment cards, so with that, I'll have the declaration of closed session by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor McCracken. We only have one closed session on the agenda tonight. It is a closed session for public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government Code 54957B, and it pertains to the evaluation of the city manager's performance. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it at the conclusion of the closed session or immediately prior to the 7:00 meeting.
Good evening. I'd like to call back to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and the City Council performing the housing functions of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. At this time, will have any announcements at a closed session?
Thank you, Mayor McCracken. We had one closed session item in public employee performance evaluation for city manager pursuant to government Code 54957B. However, at this time, the council decided to defer taking any action or taking the matter on until they had a full council, as Councilmember Cabralis was not available for closed session. So, the item will come back to you at the next meeting where we have a full council.
All right, we'll now go into our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation will be led by Father Alex Gomino from Holy Innocence Catholic Church, and our Pledge of Allegiance by Victorville Police Department Police Lieutenant Leland Bolt.
Lord, thank you for this day, and thank you for this country, a great country of ours. Touch each of our minds and hearts this evening as we operate in your best interest, not our selfish ends, in our Lord's name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public
Well, we have a great opportunity here tonight to welcome back one of our very own who's been serving our military overseas and serving us to protect our freedom, Rogelio, is that how you Smith, from the United States Army. If you'd come forward, let's give him a round of applause. Rogelio recently returned home from his second tour of duty for, and his first tour lasted six months. The second tour lasted over a year and was stationed in Iraq. And we're glad to have you back. Thank you for serving. Thank you for protecting the freedom that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, taking your time to think about a regular old guy from Victorville. Just decided to sign up and serve his country, and I appreciate it. I appreciate it all, you know. I've never actually had anything like this, so I'm a little nervous. But, yeah, the first tour was, it was pretty intense, and we were out of Solder City. The second tour was a lot more laid back, so, but I'm glad to have done it. I'm glad to have those memories, all the people I met, lifetime friends now. And I'd actually like to say hi and good luck to my buddy Joshua Victorian, who's in Afghanistan right now. I believe it's his fifth tour. So, waiting for you to come home, buddy. So, I'm a man of short words and short stature, so I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you. Thank you for it.
Thank you again for your service in our country. And should you be deployed again? We want this back because we're going to hang it back up, all right? All right. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, now we'll have our certificates and gift cards for the winners of the Public Works Day essay contest. And Ro, you're going to come up and present those?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for your time tonight, and each of you for coming. My name is Ro, as Mayor said, and I am really excited to have the opportunity to coordinate the Public Works Day event. It's really a lot of fun, and it gives us the opportunity to work together with kids of the Victor Valley Elementary School District. So, we held the Public Works Day event on June 7th, and this is a day where we host, the City of Victorville hosts 300 4th grade students from several schools, and they come out to learn how the Public Works Department contributes to the quality of life in Victorville. Our goal in this event is to educate students about public works by providing an instructive outreach program that would broaden their civic knowledge and understanding of the public works infrastructure. The essays that students were invited to write about their event experience and favorite public work station, we, as we read those, we realized we did indeed accomplish our goal. On behalf of the City of Victorville, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Victor Elementary School District for partnering with us, especially Maureen Mills. She coordinated the school's teachers and students attendance and participation. I also want to thank our Public Works Department, which includes water and engineering staff for their professional and fun event presentations. The students and Victorville Elementary School District staff really enjoyed that. Thank you, Mayor, for presenting these awards tonight. We appreciate you. And we also want to thank our sponsors. We could not do this event without them. And our sponsors are Almond Rock, American Organics, American Medical Response, Endura Steel, Graves &amp; King, GDQ, High Grade Materials, High Desert Cultural Arts Foundation, Marie Callender's, Plastipack, Stauffer's Landscape, Riverside Construction, Victor Valley Transit Authority, Victorville Recycles, and Victorville Water Conservation. So, thank you very much for making this event possible for us. The event was a success, and because of the sponsor's generosity, we're able to present these awards tonight with a gift card from Barnes &amp; Noble. And so, I also want to thank the parents of these students for allowing your students to come tonight and be awarded. And that being said, we'll go ahead and announce the winners for Public Works Day 2012 essay contest. Our third place winner goes to a student from Delray School, and she wrote about proactive approach toward graffiti abatement, and that is our approach at the City of Victorville. And we want to award Yaniza Leon, third place. Come on up. Our second place winner for the essay contest is Mia Nelson. She is from Delray School, and she wrote about animal care and control. All right, congratulations. And our first place winner goes to a student who wrote an outstanding essay on the Victorville Municipal Utility Services. That was their favorite station because it provides power to the city. And from Mojave Vista School, Renee Manchaca. Not sure if Renee is here? Renee here? We'll give her a hand anyways, and we'll get her certificate too. Thank you very much.
Thank you to both of you for your essays and all that you did to participate in this day, so thank you very much. All right, at this time, we'll have the city clerk present the agenda to the council.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the time when the item comes up for discussion by the city council. The public comment period is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the city clerk for anyone who wishes to address the city council during the public comment period. Pursuant to government code section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, addressing the council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council, and there are no revisions for tonight's agenda.
All right, we'll now go into the public comment period of our agenda, and the first card I have is Kathleen Coffey.
Evening, honorable counsel, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I live in, on 13603 Oakmont Drive, and the house next to me is a rental with an absentee landlord. There are 11 trees growing between the two houses that have just came up from an old tree in the back garden. They're called water seekers, and they're now like 15 feet above my house. The roots of the tree have invaded my plumbing. Every drain in my house at least twice a week locks up. Roderodder was out last week, and they confirmed that at least 10 feet out in front of my house, the roots of the trees have damaged the plumbing. I have wrote, the gentleman, his name is Mr. Jimmy Manuel, and he lives up in Camarillo. He never replied to the letter. He never replied to the letter. I have called his wife, they never, they don't want to talk to me about it. I'm at my wit's end because my son who lives with me, he has cerebral palsy and he was trapped in the bathroom the other day when the toilet was overflowing because there were bugs coming up the toilet. He was trapped there because his cane fell across the door and I couldn't get in and he was in his bare feet and there was tile in there. And they told me that if Sean ever fell again, that he would never walk. So now we have to be careful about him being in the bathroom, I have to go in the room, which is embarrassing for him. We can flush toilet paper down the drain because I don't want to block it up further. And Mr. and Mrs. Manuel have told my next door neighbor that if I become a nuisance about this matter, that they're, they're to call the police on me. Well, okay, now I have been advised to take out a lien against my home to fix these plumbing. And not only that, there are roots going across from the trees to the front of my house and they have cracked my driveway. They have lifted up all the red brick around my house and they're headed over to the front lawn. And I just can't get Mr. Manuel to commit any responsibility for it and he doesn't want to talk to me. And I just, and I don't feel like I have done anything wrong, Mr. Mayor. I don't think that I should have to take out a lien against my home. And I think Mr. Manuel should be held responsible because those little trees were not there when I moved in. They all came from a tree that was in the back garden. There was no lawn in the front or the back garden of Mr. Manuel's home, the rental. So when I moved in and started watering, every little root started coming towards my house. And I did remove those trees at the side of my house at my expense a few years ago and he let them grow again and so did the tenant. So there's nothing more I can do and I don't feel like I want to take a lien out on my house, Mr. Mayor. And I don't have the resources anyway to pay for all that.
Okay, as the city clerk indicated, we can't respond to this formally here tonight, so we will have our city staff look into this and speak with you and advise you as to what can be done.
Okay, thank you so very much. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, ladies.
Frank Kelly? James Nickelberry? You want me to come out there?
Yes, please. And also. Good evening, I should say, to the council and to the mayor. My name is Frank Kelly, I'm with No Drugs America, actually I'm the founder of No Drugs America and we are located, we're a nonprofit organization here in the Victorville area. And No Drugs America is proactive in its approaches to stop illegal drug use before it starts here in the valley. Normally what we have done in the past with our award here, we've, we presented it either by mail or I have gone to offices. I think I called Mike Rothschild last year out in the parking lot and also Rudy Cabralis. And when you, when I, when I call these guys' names, I have reasons for calling because we set up a particular, an award for organizations and people who join us in our efforts to stop illegal drug use. It's called our Community Action Hero Award. And we wanted to present that now to two of the folks who helped us in our 2012 No Drugs America Day campaign. What you gave, alright, which was very successful, we had hundreds of people there. And we just want to present the No Drugs America Community Action Hero Award to Angela Vaez. This certificate award is presented to you by No Drugs America Association Incorporated of Victorville, California. We thank you for helping us educate parents and kids here in the high desert of the importance of stopping illegal drug use and the illegal use of legal drugs before it starts with our kids preschool through high school. We appreciate your commitment to the community you serve, your contribution to our ongoing efforts to steer kids clear of the dangers of drug use. Also to Mr. Ryan McKeon, this certificate award is presented to you by the No Drugs America Association Incorporated of Victorville, California. We appreciate your support in helping us educate parents and kids here in the high desert of the importance of stopping illegal drug use and the illegal use of legal drugs before it starts with our kids preschool through high school. We appreciate your commitment to the community you serve and your contribution to our No Drugs America Day event on April 21st, 2012 and for helping in our efforts to steer kids clear of the dangers of drug use. Actually, there's two awards here for you, Ms. Vaez, because we spell your name two different ways, okay? And last but not least, to the city of Victorville, who, this year was our ninth annual No Drugs America Day. And I remember when Rudy was mayor, when Mike Rothschild was mayor, you guys have always supported and these new members have come along and they're doing the same thing and keeping this tradition going. And I think they are, they deserve a great round of applause for just, you know, being there to support this effort. Now, this certificate award is presented by the No Drugs America Association of Victorville, California. We thank the city of Victorville for helping us educate parents and kids here in the high desert of the importance of stopping illegal drug use and the illegal use of legal drugs before it starts with our kids preschool through high school. We appreciate its commitment to the community and its contribution to our No Drugs America Day event April 21st and for helping us in our ongoing efforts to steer kids clear of the dangers of drug use. The city of Victorville, thank you very much and thank you.
Frank, you and your organization is an incredible work, one for the city of Victorville and the Victor Valley in fact. You guys are proactive in your mission and the thing of it is, it's hard to measure your successes because many of your successes are people that never arrived at the ultimate end of the drug problems that you've acted, you interacted with their lives. I compliment you each and every year. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This is nine years of treasure that we can never pay you back for because we're, the reward is still to come down the road with those young people that you've infected. So again, thank you and the two that, today that you've given.
Thank you.
Hello, council members, I'm back again. I have a couple, three or four things I'd really like to mention. Number one is storm drains. Storm drain, we pay fees all the time, been paying fees for years. We get anything done? No. They fixed the storm drain that runs down off of Sycamore, put a big bunch of seamen in there and fixed it real nice. The only thing, it's right next door, the man's driveway that I tried getting into off of Sycamore, I end up having to sit there and spin in the dirt trying to get up his driveway. I mean, the city should do something with that. That is absolutely ridiculous, the man has to go through this. Okay, then the other thing we have, we have quite a balanced budget. Oh, that sounds wonderful to me, just wonderful, I'm glad to hear that. But, but, in the paper today, I happened to bring the article. Oh, we want to buy iPods for the council members? We want to take the money and spend, for them to go on a little vacation? We want, it's just, it just goes on and on and on. And then spend $10,000 for a consultant? I mean, we need to save the money and pay back who we owe. They owe the water district $20 million and it's a note. Has that been paid back? No. How can the budget be balanced when things are not getting paid back? That is not a balanced budget. A balanced budget is when everything is paid and you're on the good side again. But the city's not on a good side. I don't care what you say, I can go back and read all these articles and read all this stuff and now you'll say, oh, well, the paper wasn't right. Well, I don't think the paper's so wrong, from what I'm seeing. I don't think we need to spend this money, I think we need to put some money back into the budget and build that budget up so if we did have a disaster, we have money to take care of it. Right now, we don't have nothing. Work is not getting done. Look at Bear Valley Road from 15 to 395. That road is a total disaster. You try going up Amethyst, we have weeds growing in the middle of the road. Oh, they're gonna spend some money in the Golden Triangle slurring the road again. That don't do a thing for those big honking cracks and the big honking holes. That's ridiculous. But we got a budget. That is just absolutely ridiculous because we don't have nothing as far as I'm concerned. We need to save the money, put it where it belongs and put it in the roads and things for the people, not spending it for an iPod. That just really burns me for the council members. You make money sitting up there. You people should buy your own if you want one. Don't expect to take the money from here. It upsets me to no end. Thank you.
Well, I'm here to talk about a couple of things. One's a train to nowhere, which I guess that, you know, when all the smoke and ash and everything else is cleaned up, the idea came from Harry Reid Nevada. Because if he doesn't do anything about the unemployment in Clark County, which is the highest in the country, he won't have a job this year. And that's the one that's pushing for this train to nowhere. And he was looking for somebody that was gullible enough to believe that's gonna put thousands of people to work. You want to see something smart, put an additional third lane on Interstate 15 all the way to the state line from downtown Vegas to the line. It's completed. They don't need another one. Besides that, if and when somebody's stupid enough to give you guys money, if it's put in, that's gonna put a lot of people out of work in Barstow, Yarmo, Baker. Now is that gonna make you feel better? You know, I don't know what Harry Reid promised you, but it's a lie. And as far as that extra $75,000 left over, she had a very good point. Why do you have to go broke completely? And buy them an iPad? Give me a break. For once in 40 years, they finally balanced the budget and you're gonna give them a bonus? That's preposterous. You gotta be smarter than that. Think about it.
Thank you.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and City Council. It's a pleasure to address you today. I pray that my last question about recreation and recreational programs and kid intervention sparks some debate, some good debate from you guys. Today, Mr. Mayor, I want to talk to you about crime and crime prevention. I live in Brentwood and I don't need to tell you what you already, what you guys already know. Crime is probably on the rise and not stagnant. I was wondering, do we as a city have a vibrant crime prevention plan that addresses every area of the city? Do, if, do we have that plan in place and are we in the middle of working that plan? And my second question is, is the city facilitating or assisting in facilitating better communication between elementary, middle, high school, Chamber of Commerce, Sheriff's Department, and our other community stakeholders? And if the city is not, are, can, can we do a little bit more of that? I feel in order for the city to move forward, we have to have all stakeholders at the table with a nice hot cup of coffee, discussion issues. I think, I think only then is where we could really start saying, we could start tracking progress and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council members. Barbara from the Old Town Route 66 Committee and it's an head doc to the city council. And we have some things that are going well. We really appreciate this city came out to Old Town and cut all the, trimmed all the trees and bushes, it looks very good. We are still looking for some areas of parking because we are having 7,000 to 10,000 people coming in for the museum. The International Festival of Route 66, it's August 9, 10, 11, 12, and we need to prepare. I asked for a, the parking, the dirt parking between A and Forest. If that has to be on the agenda to be passed, I don't know, but we would request that to be put on the agenda if that's true. It's the one between the statue and, and the big building that the college has set up, the two-story. And we are getting parking signs, which we appreciate. And I'm still working on the parking for, for the 7th Street. We'll see how that comes in the future. I don't see it for the festival, but anyway, if we could just get that parking from A to Forest, that would be a help so people could walk down the street and see what's going on because we are going to start decorations this next week and we plan to have some things for them to stop and see. We want to encourage other businesses to celebrate this international event. There will be people all over the country, there's car show people coming out from Illinois and it's a big deal. And we were, encourage businesses to celebrate if they want Route 66 shields, they can get them at the museum for 10, 30, there's different sizes. Some are paper and some are metal, $30 or $70. And so anyway, we want to encourage people to, we are gonna have volunteers August 4th to help clean up the city, the sidewalks and windows and that kind of thing. So anyway, just want to pass on the word about the festival and encourage all Victorville members to come and help out. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that's all the public comment cards I have at this time, so we'll move into our normal agenda items. Library Board of Trustees, there were no items at the time of posting. Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, again, no items at the time of posting. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Agenda item number five is a request to, one, approve entering into a general services provider standard service agreement for the non-federal facility maintenance of Navids and related equipment ratifying expenditures for services provided during fiscal year 2011, 2012. And two, approving an additional appropriation in the amount of $12,600.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number six is request to approve entering into an attached general service provider agreement with VPS to provide security services for vacant properties.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number seven is request to approve amendment three to the security services contract for SCLA in the amount not to exceed $97,680.
On this issue, we had brought up-
On this issue, we had brought up, or I had brought up, that I was concerned about continuously extending the contract, but then you had asked for an additional extension. And now you want another one on top of that?
That's correct. At this time, we're not in a position to compare the adding of city staff to this contract. We need a little bit more time for that. So, that's the purpose of this item.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
There were no items at the time of posting for the successor agency to the redevelopment agency, nor were there any items for the Joint Powers Financing Authority. So, moving on to the Victorville Water District, we do have a public hearing called to hear arguments for and against initiating proceedings regarding standby and availability charges for water improvement district number one and number two for fiscal year 2011, 2012 as set forth in the following resolutions. Again, this is just a call for the public hearings. This is not to have those. But I will open the public hearing for both those items. Agenda item number eight, anyone wishing to address the council on either of those items? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return to the council.
I just wanna make sure we're not proposing an increase. Is that correct?
That's correct. This is just a... Will be, when it comes back to the council, as the actual public hearing, it will be just a continuance of the existing standby piece.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Rothschild. Excuse me, Mayor Protem Cabralis.
Beat me.
Motion carries unanimously.
The City Council performing housing functions of the former RDA, there were no items at the time of posting. Moving on to the City Council, we have several public hearing items. Public hearing item number nine is request for continuance of public hearing for the confirmation of annual assessments for all the landscape maintenance assessment districts and adoption of resolutions number 12-021 through 12-028 to the July 3, 2012 City Council meeting. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on agenda item number nine. Anyone wishing to address the council at this time on that item? All right, seeing no one, that item will be continued to the July 3, 2012 City Council meeting. Agenda item number 10, again, another request for continuance of public hearing for the confirmation of annual assessments for all the drainage facilities assessment districts and adoption of resolutions numbers 12-029 through 12-031 to the July 3, 2012 City Council meeting. Again, I'll open the public hearing on agenda item number 10. Anyone wishing to address the council at this time? All right, seeing no one, we will continue that item to the July 3, 2012 City Council meeting. Agenda item number 11, again, another request for a continuance of a public hearing for the confirmation of annual assessments for maintenance assessment district number one and two and adoption of resolution numbers 12-032 and 12-033 to the July 3, 2012 City Council meeting. Open the public hearing on agenda item number 11. Anyone wishing to address the council on that item? All right, seeing no one, we will continue that item to July 3, 2012. On agenda item number 12, I am going to step off the dais. My firm has handled insurance for St. Mary Medical Center in the last year. We no longer do. But in the abundance of caution, I am going to abstain on this item. So, I'll hand it over to our Mayor Protem, Rudy Cabralis.
Item number 12, I'll open up a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against planned unit development intended parcel map PLN 11-00010 as set forth in a proposed introduction of ordinance number 2290 and the adoption of resolution number 12-020, St. Mary Medical Center. The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on behalf or against item number 12, please come to the podium. Hearing done, now we'll close the public hearing.
Move introduction of ordinance number 2290.
Excuse me, Mayor Protem Cabralis, I do need to read the title of the ordinance. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville approving of planned unit development PLN 11-00010 to allow for a medical retail and hospitality campus on 98 acres to be anchored by a 128-bed hospital on property located west of Amerigos Road, north of Smoke Tree Street, east of Cobalt Road, and south of Mesa Street, St. Mary Medical Center.
Move introduction of ordinance and adoption of resolution 12-020.
And waiving further reading on ordinance, number 2290. Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries with Mayor McEckern absent.
All right, agenda item number 13 is our consent calendar.
I'd like to pull the investment report from the calendar.
Which is item F?
Yes.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, we'll go ahead and handle agenda item number 13F and Mr. Kennedy.
Adele, I don't know if you could give us a little, shed a little light on this. I was looking at the investment report, which shows funds in our bank and funds held by trustees. In December, I think in March, it was somewhere around 88 million. Then in December, the total was about 82 million. And then in March, it's up to 99 million. Can you give us an idea of why that rises and falls? Is it related to the way property tax flows in?
Absolutely. You know, we have all of our property taxes coming in at the end of the fiscal year, especially during that last six months. And so, the property tax makes up a majority of that. Also, we have the VITA payment that came in in March that usually comes in in April. And so, you see that rise in income during that last quarter. And then we also have some grant reimbursements that came in that contributed to that rise. And also, there was the use of some Baldi Mesa bond proceeds from a requisition that was used.
With those proceeds, were we able to get current with the bond custodian on the delinquent payments from December?
We did. We were... There were two payments, principal payments, that were in default, and we cured that default. And so, those principal payments were made. We also used, had a use of the reserves for the interest payment. Instead of using that money to go back into the reserve accounts, the trustee put them in special revenue accounts so that they were special accounts at their trustee level so that they were available to be used for our June 1 payment. And so, they were, they're available to be used for our June 1 payment.
So, we're current on those default payments from December. What do you think our situation is gonna be in June when they come due again? Do you expect we'll be in default again?
The June payments have been made, and, you know, we are not in default for any principal payments, all of the... Because the principal payments only come in December. And so, the interest payments, you know, were, you know, made, you know, with the use of the reserve, you know, the amounts that were there available and the amount that we put in. And so, all of our interest payments were made.
So, in June, we shouldn't have a problem, but we may face it again come next December.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Councilmember Rothschild? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to compliment staff on that report. I found it real useful, helpful to understand where that money sits and how it moves.
All right, moving on to agenda item number 14. This is request to adopt resolutions number 12-036, 12-037, calling for the November 6, 2012, general municipal election and requesting consolidation with the presidential election.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 15, this is for discussion only because we will be having a special council meeting and workshop to actually adopt the budget for next year on June 28. But we are discussing and getting a summary of the proposed budget tonight. So, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Doug Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am proud to present a balanced budget with no use of reserves for the first time in four years. It's a tremendous accomplishment for both City Council and the staff. Little bit of background information on the budget. We have had four years of deficits. We have seen that the economy is headed back up, although it is headed up slowly, as has been predicted. We have significant progress in new construction of both infrastructure and also some new retail, which helps contribute to the budget being balanced. I see Norm on his way down. Did you wanna take public comment before or after the presentation, Mr. Mayor?
I'll let you finish your presentation.
Okay. Let's see here. We would like to acknowledge the help that we got from some volunteers to keep some of our recreation programs up and operating this fiscal year. Without that help, they certainly were at risk of shutting down. We have implemented a measured use of reserves over the last four years, and I'll get a little bit more detail on that a little bit later. One thing I wanna point out, you know, the City of Victorville and the City Council has been criticized for using the reserves, for spending all of the money. And it's sometimes couched, or maybe I just am a little bit sensitive to it, that somehow it was runaway spending. In fact, as the council will recall, over the last several budget years, you have made conscious decisions to fund public safety and other core services at the expense of the reserves, purposely using those reserves. Other cities have cut police and fire in order to maintain a high level of reserves. That certainly is well within both of, or all three, or however many city councils discussions to make those choices on behalf of their citizenry. And I wanna applaud the council for supporting the public safety at the expense of the reserves. It's nice to have a healthy reserve for rough times, for rainy days. And with this economy, you're not gonna see rain quite like this ever again in any of our careers, I would hope. What I mean by a measured use of reserves is in 2008 and '09, we had, or going into '09, '10, we had about a $13.4 million projected deficit. And that year, we cut and cut deeply, both in pay, benefits, hours, taking furloughs, as well as the number of staff that we have. We had a tremendous number of layoffs. Since that time, the council each year has voted to use a certain portion of those reserves while maintaining public safety, while maintaining the number of actual police officers on the street, the number of actual firefighters on the street. And we had hoped that after, you know, over about a three-year period, that the economy would meet us and start to come back up before we had actually expended all those reserves. We ended up needing a fourth year, but we're finally there now. I went over a little bit this already. Some of the salary and benefit reductions that we took back in '09 and '10, '09, '10 fiscal year, we eliminated a 401A plan, which was primarily for department heads and managers and above. We severely cut back a cell phone allowance program, auto allowance programs. We eliminated a HMO subsidy. We cut back a benefit cash-out program. We eliminated stability pay. We implemented a Friday furlough, which is the equivalent of a 10% pay cut to employees' pay. We eliminated almost all travel and conferences and eliminated or cut almost all training. We're coming up on about 250, I suspect by now. This chart is maybe a couple of months old, less employees than we had in '08, '09. Tremendous number of those were through layoff. There was some voluntary layoffs along the way as well. The proposed budget that you have a summary of and then some sort of raw data behind it has general fund revenues of just over $47 million and general fund expenditures projected at just under $47 million. Total revenues, you can see there approximately $155 million in revenues and expenditures of about $129 million across all of the funds in the city. Our major enterprise operations have not been of great concern. Obviously, our biggest concern has been our general fund, where we pay for those public safety services. Water and sewer have been able to mitigate drops in revenues by reducing expenditures. The City Council, back in November 2010, approved a water rate increase. I think it's eight, just over 8%. And it has since been deferred twice. It's currently set to increase in just a few days, July 1. But based on the current budget and the proposed budget, staff is recommending another deferral of that water rate increase. It's just not necessary. Sewer rate increase will be necessary, and we will pass through those costs that were charged by BBWRA. Airport operations is, once again, has a balanced budget for the third straight year. Recreation and golf has been a topic of discussion at many council meetings over the last year. Two years ago, it seems like more probably to them as well. But just two years ago, we turned over golf operations to Billy Casper Golf. And over those two years, they've reduced that deficit and are projecting cost, total cost to the city of just under $300,000 for next fiscal year. They are ahead of their schedule that they proposed to the city on a five-year plan to get the golf course to break even. That contract is heavily incentivized to make the course profitable, and they would then share in that profit. Last year, as I mentioned, the recreation programs were at risk due to lack of funding and no guarantee of an economic turnaround. I am happy to once again bring up the fact that the pool opened as usual on Memorial Day weekend. We were able to find enough savings from the previous fiscal year, actually, once we got through all of the accounting, that we could fund that opening of the pool and the pool throughout this summer. And we don't see any reason that it could be in danger from this point forward. Westwind Sports Center was saved by volunteers at this point and as part of this budget. The city's now able to fund operations again so that those volunteers can continue to work on the recreation programs that they've been so successful at building without having to worry about the actual maintenance of the facility and staffing of the facility.
That last point, that last one there is very important. Those volunteers who worked their butt off to save those programs out there, and it's one of those subtle little things off to the side, that they have their vested interests and they put their, all their little resources together to make that project out there work. I was with them just a few times when they were putting it together, but that's one of the big volunteer points in this bullet list.
Yeah, it was a, it was a great thing for the city, and we really thank them for that. There are assumptions and risks in any budget, and I don't want to, you know, shy away from those. Property tax is, we struggle every year to try to predict property tax recently because of, you know, home values going up and down and more down than up. But they seem like they're trying to go back up a little bit, and we've had some indicators that they potentially could be going up a little bit, especially, I've heard from a lot of owners of multiple properties that have a rental business, who've said that their rental units are getting reassessed higher. So, I don't know if there's some way that the assessor is looking at that or exactly why that is. It seems like one day you'll read in the news that home prices are finally headed back up, and then the next day, they're headed back down. So, it's very difficult to predict. This year, we're simply budgeting flat, same amount that we had in the current fiscal year. flat, same amount that we had in the current fiscal year. Sales tax, we're going on two straight years of increases to sales tax coming to the city. The state of California, up and down the state, had about a 9.3% increase over the last 12 months, I think it was. That was just recently in the newspaper. So we are budgeting for increased sales tax to continue. PERS Public Safety, these, there's a little bit more detailed information in the actual agenda write-up, but just to go through these quickly. The PERS Public Safety is actually kind of two items. The contract safety staff that we have, who actually work for the county, do have some increases to their retirement benefits, and there are some increases to the amount that we need to budget to pay for those. But also, on a bit of a surprise to us, this, in the past few months, the firefighters that were city firefighters that transferred to the county back, it's now four years ago, actually still have their retirement system, that is, the city retirement system, that needs to maintain a certain dollar amount. Because there are no employees to pay into that, and the city doesn't pay into that any longer, there's actually a balance due with PERS. And we are currently in negotiations with them to try to resolve exactly how much that should be and how quickly it needs to be paid. So that'll be something that'll be coming back to the City Council, you know, early next fiscal year, we hope. Booking fees are estimated to be about $442,000 for next fiscal year. Historically, these have been covered by the state because the state doesn't want to have what they call an arrest tax, to where jurisdictions are hesitant to arrest somebody because they don't want to pay the $75 to $150, you know, just to simply book them into the jail. So historically, the state has covered that, but also historically, the state has used that as a bit of a pawn in their budget wranglings, and it's something that typically comes fairly late in their process. So as of right now, we are not budgeting to pay those because we believe the state will do the same as they've always done and continue to pay them. Vehicle license fees. Last year, after we passed our budget, we found out that the state had, or was going to and did, absconded with our vehicle license fees that are constitutionally protected for the city of Victorville and all cities. The California League of Cities has sued the state. They had a hearing June 5th that the reports out of that hearing was, it seemed to be very positive. There was quite a debate, I guess, between the judge and the representative from the state, from the city, from the State Attorney General's office. So it at least appears that the judge in that case is finding some serious constitutionality problems with the taking of those funds. Should the cities prevail, the amount that we didn't get this fiscal year, the current fiscal year, I believe was $395,000, and then we would be able to then budget for a similar amount for next fiscal year. So that could be quite a windfall. And it could actually help us, should they do something different on booking fees, or could help us with that PERS issue that we still have to resolve with the state. The Carter and Burgess lawsuit proceeds are not part of this budget. In years past, many years ago now, there was some one-time revenues that were anticipated, that were budgeted for, that never came. And unfortunately, that kind of dropped us over the cliff on our need to cut at that point, because those one-time funds were relied on back in 2007, '08, and '09. And when they didn't come, it really put us in a bind, and the reason why we were among the first of the cities to cut. The Carter and Burgess lawsuit proceeds, we anticipate the appellate court to make their final decision sometime late this calendar year, maybe end of November, beginning of December. And ultimately, we anticipate getting those proceeds. Based on the timing and based on the 10% interest rate that we're earning, if it goes all the way through the end of December, those proceeds will be about $64 million. Just a couple of months ago, the City Council approved an agreement with BNP Paribas, who is the bank that holds the letter of credit that guarantees the bonds for that plant. That letter of credit amendment defines how those lawsuit proceeds will be paid. The first call on those dollars is about 22, almost $23 million to repay the Water District for the loan that currently exists between the municipal utility and the Water District. We believe that is going to happen later this fiscal year sometime. There's a series of other things that is also, we've agreed to fund. None of that money goes to the bank. It's just that they want to help prescribe exactly how they're spent. One of the key issues for them and for us was a replenishment of the reserves. This City Council, I think it's been two years ago now, set a reserve policy of a floor of 5% and a goal of 15% reserves. That agreement actually requires that we fund that 5% reserve. We ultimately will end up with additional dollars if this council could fund a higher level of that reserve once those proceeds come in. There's a very small potential for us to lose the, ultimately, the appeal. I don't think it's going to happen, but that's, they're courts. Ultimately, the appellant could appeal all the way to the California Supreme Court. I don't want to speak as if I'm a lawyer, but I don't think there's anything groundbreaking in this case that the Supreme Court would actually hear that, hear it. But there is a process to go through for them to request it, and that process takes about four to five months. Keep in mind that, you know, it would, that still is within this fiscal year, and four to five months at 10% interest would probably net us another $2.5 million or so in those proceeds. So, you know, they can take their time, as far as I'm concerned. It'd be nice to have that money and repay some of those loans, but I don't know anybody that's getting 10% interest on their money right now. So we're pretty happy with it, with it slowing down, if it needs to. There is an assumption that Thursday, the BBWRA will pass a rate increase from $2,200 million gallons per day to $25,000, $28 million gallons per day. This dollar amount is passed through to customers. The city doesn't take any piece of it. And ultimately, that would affect bills by about $2.44 per month. There are potential changes in water law. There's something called chromium HDL, MDL, something or other. I don't, it's not that important, but that, there seems to be some movement, kind of like the arsenic movement, to try to have some kind of controls on these chemicals. There's nothing in the pipeline right now, so there's nothing budgeted, but it is something I wanted the council to be aware of, and our department has wanted the council to be aware of, that potentially could cost money in the future. The arsenic treatment costs, when they changed the arsenic treatment laws, ended up costing the district, I think it was 18-some million dollars. The Street Lighting District right now is struggling a bit. The Street Lighting District is made up of a series of districts, small districts, but it started off with a district that was essentially the boundaries of the city back in the '70s, or actually before the '70s. That district is guaranteed a portion of the property tax dollar, but it's, there is no cost of living increase for that portion of the district. The smaller districts that make up the rest of it do have a cost of living increase, but we do have some work to do with the council over the summer to look at options for helping that district along to make sure that it doesn't end up impacting the general fund in the future. The Sheriff's Contract, this year, when we got the first, it's called a Schedule A. It's our sort of detailed number of deputies and things, was set to increase by about $1 million, including $353,000 additional for the county's cost allocation plan. The cities have protested. It actually would have been a 70% increase, and as I understand it, or, excuse me, ultimately, working with the chief and making changes to that Schedule A, eliminating the vacancies we had, because we were paying that 5%, we would be paying that 5% cost allocation on vacant positions, working with the chief, with Captain Yoder, we were able to reduce that down to about $420,000 increase for essentially the same level of service, same number of actual employees on the street. We got late word, actually, this morning. Captain Yoder called me, and I've had a couple of emails on this, that on Tuesday of last week, apparently, the Board of Supervisors, hearing the city's complaints, voted to delay that increase to the cost allocation plan by six months. Effectively, it cuts that $353,000 in half. So we want to thank our supervisor, Mittelfelt, and the other supervisors who voted in favor of that. So that savings is not reflected in the budget at this time, but it is there. I've already spoken with Captain Yoder, and he's got a couple of modifications to the contract that he would like to see, and I've asked that he and I meet early next week to discuss that. So by Thursday, hopefully, we'll have a modified contract that could enhance our level of service with the Sheriff's Department. The Fire Contract, unfortunately, has increased $715,000 for the same level of service. Significant portion of that is actually for fire prevention and hazardous materials costs. We are going to be studying the cost of those programs to see if we need any kind of a rate increase that they, at a minimum, cover their, cover their cost. And ultimately, we need to get to that point so that it's not a burden on the citizenry of Victorville to pay for costs that are legitimate business expenses for those fire prevention duties. House went to sleep. Brandon, can you advance the slide for me? Maybe? Well, while he's working on that, essentially, this is just a discussion item. I have a, oh, here we go. Thank you, Brandon. I am proposing, essentially, cementing a small reorganization that I've done over the last six months or so. We have a current executive team of essentially six people, and we have, that is shown on your screen there. I don't include the two county chiefs because they don't typically get into our sort of strategic planning and things. The two department heads, or three department heads, have larger departments now with multiple roles. I'm proposing a second tier of management with responsibility for kind of the day-to-day operations, so that the executive team can focus on citywide issues, and also giving those, that second tier of executive management the appropriate decision-making authority to carry out their duties. It reduces the span of control for myself and for those department heads, and ultimately improves the operation of the city. Part of that proposal would be to put the two department heads on contract. The third department head is currently in an acting role, and I'm not proposing to do anything with that position until we get to the point that we're going to do a recruitment with it. The purpose for this is to give flexibility for the city and be able to retain high-performing department heads, senior staff, and effectively recruit in the future. I'm confident that their pay is currently under their peers, and that we need to make some adjustments there. Just to give you a little bit of background and history, back in '08-'09, there was a total of essentially 16 departments, including police and fire. At that time, we were transitioning fire from a city department to a county department. So you had a tremendous number of executive staff and essentially a very flat organization with every department head reporting directly to the city manager. In '09-'10, when Mr. Cox came back to the city, we did a reorganization and eliminated seven of those department head positions and created some larger departments. Many of the departments from the previous slide only had really a handful of people in them. So we tried to balance it out a little bit more as far as the number of employees and amount of responsibility across the departments. During that year, we also had all of the layoffs, or most of the layoffs. We had furloughs, we had all those benefits cuts. So as a result, we also had 29 demotions. As a result, many of the, many staff have left, and we've been somewhat in freefall from a staffing perspective. And so I'm trying to solidify the organization, and this is the, essentially, the org chart that exists now. It's three department heads, myself, the assistant city manager, who oversees the Economic Development Department and Airport, and a vacant deputy city manager position. We were unsuccessful in retaining deputy city manager, who would be over administrative services. The remaining department heads, especially development and public works, are now overseeing essentially what in '08-'09 was three to four departments in and of themselves. So you used to have three or four people with those responsibilities that now fall to only one. So the savings between what department heads we had in '08-'09 versus now is tremendous. It's approaching probably $2 million in savings. Compensation and benefits over those years has steadily dropped. You can see there the overall versus the general fund portion. The management portion of those salaries has also dropped as far as a total compensation for all employees. It's actually dropped at a slightly quicker rate than the chart that's in front of you right now. Along with all of those changes that occurred, we also had these changes that came out of necessity as people left. Other employees, not just department heads, have taken on additional duties. They've taken on greater duties. And, you know, I was, I've been pushing this actually for two years now, and this is something that I have in the proposed budget. It's a complete classification and compensation study. We froze salary and benefits about four years ago now, and so those things have remained largely unchanged. Other cities have not frozen every benefit. Some of them have reduced benefits, actually, especially with regard to retirement benefits, whereas other cities, a lot of them have, over that timeframe, paid additional health benefits. So our employees, the freezing of all of those pay and benefits has affected them both negatively and positively. And with all of the changes in the organization, we really need kind of a reset on our classification and compensation, to the point that we make sure that every employee is appropriately compensated and has the appropriate title and has the appropriate benefits. We need to balance that need. As other cities now are beginning to come out of this as well and are beginning recruitments, we need to balance that need to retain and recruit new employees while protecting the public dollar. And the best way to do it is to see where we are. So I'm recommending just that complete study of all compensation and all benefits, including the retirement system. Councilmember Rothschild, for years, has come to me probably every three months to talk about changing from a defined benefit program that we're currently in to a defined contribution program for new employees. And some agencies have done that. And so that's one of the things that I want, I want, would want this person to study, or this firm to study. So in summary, the budget absorbs approximately $1 million in increases to public safety. There's no use of reserves, at least in the general fund. Does not rely on one-time revenues. We maintain, for the most part, service levels. There are a few minor improvements. And we are revenue positive by about $75,000. In an attempt to start a discussion with the council about what to do with that little bit of money, those few crumbs that are left, I put some items, some thoughts, into the agenda item, and apparently, people have picked up on that as if it's somehow part of the budget. It is not part of the budget at this time. It doesn't need to be part of the budget. These are essentially some luxuries that have made it on this list through a variety of ways. Certainly, we can take all of that $75,000 and put it towards the reserves, and that would be, you know, a very good thing to do. I do believe, although we aren't budgeting it this way, I do believe that the Carter and Burgess lawsuit will at some point resolve during this fiscal year, and those reserves will be replenished through that manner. But if the council so chooses, certainly, we can put all that towards the reserve. Councilmember iPads, I actually put this on here. There's been a lot of discussion at this council's level about iPads, not so much the city purchasing them. But actually, a week or two ago, I was meeting with some of the other city managers and the new executive director of Sandbag, and he asked just simply, a simple poll, how many cities that, or how many member agencies on the Sandbag Board provide iPads or some other electronic device to their council? His goal is to cut down on about $1,000 in printing for Sandbag each month to print agendas and send them out. I know that Apple Valley and Adelanto, I'm not sure about Hesperia, but essentially, most of the cities in the county have gone to something like this. You know, if the council wants to do it, I've given you a cost. If the council doesn't want to do it, that's okay, too. We're just trying to add a little bit of convenience. And since the question had been asked by Sandbag, I thought, well, what better time than now? One council member asked me about the annual League of Cities Conference. It's an important conference for cities. We have canceled all of these, all of this travel. In years past, the delegate has paid for his or her own way. We have a few We have a few dollars left. If the council so chooses, you could fund the annual league conference. It's about $1,100 per person. It's somewhere in Southern California this year. If you don't want to do that, that's okay, too. There's a Granicus upgrade that we originally had in the budget, but as we were trimming back to make it a balanced budget, we took it out. Essentially, what this would do, it would take what is a very paper-intensive process for staff right now and make it paperless, putting everything online to where all the approvals for agenda items and things are done electronically. It would make us more efficient, but it's, you know, I can't say that we're going to save $47,000 in the first year because we're not. We'll save a little bit of money in staff time that is going to be impossible to quantify. It's something out there that I know a lot of the staff would like to see when we begin to come back. If now isn't that time, then we'll do it next year or maybe the year after. I spoke with each of the council members individually earlier this year about your individual goals, and talked about the fact that, you know, the city hasn't done a goal-setting session, you know, with the public, with the council, with the staff, in my 10 years that I can recall. We've done a few on a staff level. We've involved one or two council members to the extent that we could. So one option that could be out there is to work on that after we have a new council seated in maybe January or February, to give the staff the direction and the input from whomever is on the council at that time. Again, just like everything else on this list, if it's not something the council wants to support, we won't do it. This was just a list that I came up with rather quickly, based on input from council members, from staff members, and from others. Certainly, we're open to any other thoughts about any piece of the budget. We would prefer not to have you get too deep into the detail of the budget because all you really have is raw data right now. We will have a budget workshop on June 28th at 5:00. But at this point, I will open it up to any council comments, questions, any other ideas for anything else you might want to see in the budget.
Actually, before we get to that, Doug, if I could have Norm Miller wanted to make a comment on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and other council members. I just want, I guess I got this out of context a little bit because you're going to have a budget meeting, but I just wanted to bring up a couple items here. One is they're talking about, I guess it's slurring, some of the roads in the Golden Triangle, and we've lived there for 12 years, and that road, all those roads in there were bad back then, and they're still bad, and they've been slurried before, and it hasn't helped them any. They need to be repaired, if anything, but I know you can't do that. But I'd rather see that money put into Bear Valley Road west of the freeway because that is getting to be a real mess. I mean, it's almost like a washboard, and that needs to be looked at a little bit. You know, there's a lot of business coming that way now, and I guess with Walmart coming in, they have to do some work from, I understand, from 395 to the river on road, but I think it's mostly intersections, not so much road pavement. But that needs to be looked in if you get any money to put onto Bear Valley Road. I think that would be much better than the Golden Triangle because we're getting along with what we have, and I'm not sure what the problems are in the roads there, but they're no worse than they were 10 years ago. Another thing is, on the internet, the Granicus or whatever it is, I try to get on the internet and see the meetings here when we don't make it, which hasn't been very often, but I cannot watch this program, this meeting, real time. It goes for about five seconds, and then it stops in buffers for about five or six seconds. And I've been through this with everybody I can think of. I've even changed from EarthLink to Verizon because they seem to have a better streaming speed. Well, it wasn't any better, and I got a hold of Verizon, not Verizon the internet, but Verizon the telephone company. And apparently, in my area, their streaming speed is only about 1.5 megabytes instead of five. And from what I was told, Granicus, you need to have about a five-megabyte stream to watch this meeting. Now, I can watch it two or three days later with no problem, but if I want to watch it during the meeting, it just don't work. I'm not the only one out there. I've got a brand-new computer, so I know it's not my computer, and apparently, it's the telephone line that's the problem. But if there's anything they can do to make it a little bit more better for, you know, the public, and I don't know if other people have this problem or not, you may not have heard of it, but maybe there isn't that many people watching it anyway. So anyway, just a thought there. My other thing is on the $20 million loan for the waste treatment plant, is there any money being put aside to pay that loan off? Or are you just waiting to hope for things to come through? I guess that's a question.
I can answer most of that, at least. The, on the telephone line, obviously, that's not something the city controls. I actually live near you, a little bit further north of you, and I have the same problem where the Verizon lines just simply aren't fast enough. So I actually ended up, and I'm not endorsing them in any way, but I actually ended up switching over to Charter. They had some options that were a higher speed. You might check in to that as one option that could improve your, the speeds of video.
Well, it seemed to me, before you went to Granicus, we were able to do that without too much trouble.
Yeah, back, well, we were always with Granicus, but what's changed is the video feed. It was essentially just an audio feed, which took a lot less bandwidth than a video feed does. With regard to the wastewater treatment plant, we do have plans. Right now, we are essentially at break even, but ultimately, we do have plans to repay every bit of that loan. We are actually working on trying to either separate out the water from the city portion or potentially bring them together in a more appropriate manner. That plant, as we all know, financially, did not end up getting paid the way it was originally intended. So it's a bit of a patchwork right now, and I've met with accounting and engineering staff many, many times, trying to get it all sorted out so that we can bring it to this council for a final decision.
Okay. And on the roads, do anything you can for Bear Valley, it needs a lot of help.
Yeah, I'd suggest that you talk with Sean McGlade or Brian Gangler. They can give you their assessment as to why they put those items in the CIP the way that they did. I'm not in a position to really answer that piece of your questions, nor I don't think anybody at the council level is.
But I'd just like to see some of that stuff cleaned up. You know, I know you've got a problem on the east side, and I know you're trying to get to that. And it seems to me, you know, we go down Bear Valley a lot, we go down Main Street a lot, and I don't see any Main Street road problems like they have east of the freeway on Bear Valley. So next time, don't go with Caltrans.
Yeah, I don't think we will.
Doug, check me on this. I think the simple answer to Norm's question about that $20 million is actually, there are three different entities involved in that loan, Vemos, Water District, and CLA. The quick resolution of that is when the Carter-Burgis proceeds come to the city. For some reason, that doesn't happen, and I can't even comprehend how that wouldn't happen. The long-term payoff, Vemos is generating maybe $1 million a year of surplus now.
2.7 million.
2.7 million, actually. So theoretically, they could do, they could repay that. The first loan payback has to come from Vemos, and at 2.7 million, conceivably, that's a 10-year payback. But I think our realistic expectation is the Carter-Burgis funds will come in, and all three of those loans will be taken care of.
I think unfortunately, Mr. Miller mixed two issues. He was really speaking of the wastewater treatment loan from Water Capital, but he referenced $20 million, which is the loan from the Water District to Vemos. So my response was more related to the wastewater treatment plant loan, not that Vemos loan.
Okay. Other comments by council members? Again, this is just for discussion tonight. You're looking for some direction with respect to the additional amount that you've got. Other than that, we still have a full public hearing on the 28th, correct?
That's correct, yeah. We're certainly happy to take any questions on any piece of the budget. I would like to have at least some comment from council on either some of the items or some other items that you may want to, and maybe it's just simply put it all in reserves, that additional 75 million, or $75,000.
Boy, you added a couple zeros to that.
Be a really short meeting, otherwise.
Well, I have my own iPad, so I don't need one. My own preference would be we just put all that in reserves, but I'll defer to the rest of the council on that.
But I would agree. I personally don't eat an iPad. Wouldn't know what to do with it if I had one, so. But yeah, I think you should just go back in reserves. And as far as the meetings and the conferences and all that other stuff, we've done well without them for the last four years. I'd like to commend the city manager and staff for providing us with a balanced budget. It's been a difficult four years, more or less, and, you know, you talk about reserves, and everybody gets blasted because we use reserves, but as was stated this earlier, the reserves are for an emergency. When you have a recession, that's an emergency, especially when you want to maintain your police and fire services, and that's what we did.
My priority for this budget would be public safety, roads, and youth activities. I do have, I was really concerned when I saw the newspaper article regarding the iPads because I didn't really understand that. I thought maybe somebody had requested them, so, but you said nobody requested them. That was just something you had thought of to get more green?
Just in response to the Sandbag Executive Director's question, you know, how many cities have iPads for the council members?
I think everybody has an iPad that uses, you know, technology. And as far as the conferences, if any council member wants to go to a conference, I personally think that they should pay for it. They should pay for their own conference. I am concerned about getting rid of the five positions for the police and the truancy officers. Who used to pay for those truancy officers?
As far as I understand it, truancy officers were hired by the school district, actually.
Okay, that's what, that's my understanding. So I never really understood why they were even included in the number of officers for the city of Victorville. And now my question is, is since they, we're getting, the San Bernardino County School District is getting rid of the truancy officer, is that my understanding?
It's actually, there's two different things. I don't know what the status is of their truancy officers. The truancy officer was actually, as I understand it, an employee of the district. What they've instructed our captain to do is remove two school resource officers, which is kind of a liaison between the sheriff's office and the schools, and also acts as a deputy right there on each campus.
And so, but they were paying part of that position?
Yeah, they pay essentially all of that position during the school year. The city would pick up that cost over the summer, so they would pay 75% of that school resource officer position.
And this is what I'm concerned about, is San Bernardino is eliminating those positions, but yet, who's taking care of it? It's still going to be our officers taken off the streets, so when our residents call, they still have to go deal with the school.
That is potentially true, yes. I have not talked with the high school board or the high school district superintendent. It really is, unfortunately, the city has no control over what they do and how they budget. I don't know if he's taking that money from school resource positions and putting them into additional truancy officers or additional security. I think a couple of years ago, they took one school resource officer position away and added more security because they felt that they would, they needed more bodies than they needed an actual police officer. I don't have the answer to that question.
My concern would be is that we make sure that the school districts are not dumping on the council and taking away our resources that we're paying for, for our residents, and that's just my comment there. And regarding the reorg, I do understand the need because the city has been taken down rapidly with positions. So I do understand the need to reorganize. My concern is the raises. That's what I'm concerned about. I would like to see a classification study on those positions, but I caution you on those raises there because we are now, it appears that we're recovering and things are getting better, and I think that this is just not the time right now to do that. But I do understand that there needs to be a reorganization because it's kind of a mess right now that you're dealing with, and, like you said, the positions are just falling out, and you need to get control of that. My concern is, is that we are paying back debts, and we are keeping enough reserves, and I agree with the mayor, that we put that money back into reserves. The council doesn't need anything at this level. We're fine. And I'm also concerned about that fee increase for San Bernardino County. I really, I really don't understand it. So this guy, Deveraux, can come up and just say that he's going to charge us $1 million, and the cities just pay it, and then he comes back and says, oh, I'm going to give you, let's make a deal, 50% off. What are we getting for that?
That's a darn good question. That's something that came up in the city manager's meeting with Mr. Deveraux, and we asked for a detail. I was very direct, as I can be, as you know, in saying that I will not represent this well for the county because I have no information about the increase. We were given, and I don't even know what I did with it because it was useless, we were given, I hesitate to even call it a spreadsheet because it only had about three or four lines with, had some total dollar amounts that apparently were charged to the county sheriff for these, for these cost allocations. And essentially, we were told that it's going from 3% times, you know, every personnel to 5% times, which is a 70% increase. That's essentially the information that I have. It goes to the county administrative office, to county legal council, to county purchasing, to county HR, to, you know, those types of administrative activities. It's interesting. I have, on occasion, remarked that, you know, we have had some sizable contracts with, say, Cooley Construction, and we don't have to pay Cooley Construction $850,000 just for the benefit of contracting with them. You know, I think those contracts, those costs should be, you know, part of the contract, but it needs to be fair. And right now, I don't want to say that it's not fair because I don't have enough information to make that assessment, but it certainly seems unfair the way it was handled.
And I've tried to get that information, and I'm not getting it. And I have to tell you that this almost reminds me of, like, the mafia. They just put a fee on you, and you got to pay, and you get nothing for it. What do we get for it? At least the mafia gave you protection against themselves. But this is ridiculous. I think that the city should band together and not pay it. Why are we paying this? And how can they just come to us and just say, you got to pay this, well, we're going to give you 50% off, and then we think it's a good deal? They're playing us for a fool. We need to stand up and say, no, we're not going to pay it.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's the price you pay for contracting for public safety or any service. Ultimately, there are options. I'm not recommending anything at this time. Certainly, there are options if it's not in the city's best interest to contract with the county for those services. You know, we can take a look at bringing those back in-house, whether it's fire, fire prevention, or even potentially the sheriff's contract.
And with this new budget, are we doing any more layoffs with this budget?
We are not, no.
Okay. And so, instead of giving those raises, has any consideration been given to bring back some of those employees that might be able to provide services to the residents?
We have brought back a few employees over the last year, I'll say. Not many, not many at all, and they haven't been brought back even at the level, the full-time position that they were, that they lost.
And there is another thing that I didn't understand in your slide. In the assumption risk slide, you talked about PERS and then public safety. Can you explain that one more time?
Sure. When we had city fire four years ago and previous to that, we had two separate calculations for retirement. One was for general employees, everyone except for public safety. The fire employees had a different level of benefit. And just like you do with your employees at BBWRA, there's an employee and employer share, and those can change over time depending on the stock market, depending on, you know, how much has been withdrawn by retirees, those sorts of things.
So you still have that liability there?
We still have that liability. It's something that, you know, current staff knew about until just recently, and we got hit with a surprise bill from PERS, and we're calling them, saying, you know, we don't, we don't have a fire unit anymore. And so we're trying to work out, you know, how, what are our options for repaying this? Right now, we aren't budgeting to repay it because we can't afford to repay it.
Has an actuarial been done?
That's what we've asked for, is for them to redo the actuarial because the markets are changing. And, you know, typically with PERS, when you have a significant change, they tend to smooth that, those significant changes over about a 10-year period. What they requested of us was a three-year payback, and we just simply can't afford it right now.
And this was never even considered when you got rid of the fire department?
I don't think anybody knew about it, no. No, no.
Yeah, just a couple of things. With respect to the golf course, think of that savings as a going-forward number. There isn't any as a going-forward number. There isn't anybody that would entertain the idea of letting the golf course go back to what happened to it many years ago. So everybody says a municipal golf course is always a financial drain of some amount on whatever city is operating. It has always been the case. This council took the course of putting it into the private sector. Some of the employees that worked for us worked for them, some retired, some went off and did something else. But the fact is that that transition into the private sector is what created the opportunity to save 1.7 million going forward. Multiply that by 10 or something, you can see a $17 million amount that's not bounced off against the general fund. So that's, that's one of the nice features of what we've done with the golf course. With respect to Vemus, it is up to 2.7 million for gas and electric, generating a positive revenue, and will grow continually as more customers are added out there. We have a large customer area with that, SCLA. But certainly, the Express West, their new name, Express West is a potential customer to Vemus because it is an all-electric operation out there, not the least of which is the factory will be out there as well, right next to the city, there, in the city. So we've got a lot of opportunities here. So that's, it's turning out pretty good now. It didn't look so good a few years ago, but it, as we stand here right now, it looks like a good decision.
Mr. Mayor, I do need to caution the council and the public. The 2.7 million dollar number is only for the operations, the current scheme that we're using for our electric and gas utility, where we purchase wholesale power and sell it on the retail market to our customers. You will not find, you know, some magical Vemus budget in your budgets that you should get later this week that shows revenue positive number of 2.7 million dollars. That is because of the failure of the Foxborough Power Plant, as well as some other past issues that we still have hanging out there that cost the city tremendous amounts of money every fiscal year. But what, the reason for that number being in my report is to keep in mind that a lot of times people think there's a quick answer that, well, gosh, if the utility is costing you a million or $2 every year, why not just shut it down and get rid of it and let everything go to Edison? Well, the reality is, those sunk costs would still be there. Those bonds for Foxborough would still be there, and they would become a burden on the general fund. So that 2.7 million dollars represents the amount of money that the general fund doesn't have to pay because of the success of the purchase and sale program that we're doing now.
Just a comment and a couple of questions, Doug, for you. A comment, Dorothy, sort of in response to your statement earlier this evening about the deficit, big deal, what's the deficit? So we got a balanced budget, we got all this debt. Why haven't we got the debt paid back? Well, understand something. The deficit, and I'm sure everybody understands this, but just in case you don't, the deficit or a surplus is strictly the difference between revenue and expense. And it's the general fund. And when that problem was a $14 million deficit a few years ago, and today it's even, it's basically breaking even on 46 million, $47 million of revenue, we got 46.9 in expenses. And that is some huge progress from three years ago. Didn't fix every problem. We haven't fixed every street. We haven't paid back any debt, other than our normal principal payments out of the tax increment. But it's a huge step in the right direction. So, it is a big deal, Dorothy, I got to tell you. Doug, a couple of questions. You've got the reorganization laid out here. Have you built it into this current budget?
It is built into this current budget. This budget assumes that reorganization. It also assumes the classification and compensation study. It also assumes a certain number of recruitments over the next few months. We have some current vacant positions that we would like to fill. We have some current part-time employees that we would like to recruit to be full-time employees. They've stuck with us through all of these years. And we have, you know, just some more work to do in order to stabilize our employee population. Things that are not, you know, over and above what we used to have. It's just simply, we're in maintenance mode for this coming fiscal year, trying to get back on our feet.
And from what you said, the department head's structure now is going to involve some compensation increases.
That's correct.
From where they are at this moment. Is that built into the budget?
Yes, it is.
Okay. The big number, the big revenue number that I'd like to take a second to focus on, as I'm looking through all the revenue changes, is sales tax. And I'm looking at your, your actuals for the 2011 year were 15.2 million, 15.2 million from both sources. I'm just combining them. Your budget for '11 was 15.4. We don't have the actuals for '12. How realistic is that? Well, let me rephrase it. You're expecting 17.5 million total in sales tax in this next year. It's about a $2 million increase over what we think this year is going to be.
That's correct. This year, we budgeted fairly conservatively. Sales tax is ahead of those figures. And actually, if you recall, in, I think it was March, maybe April, we hired a new consultant, the HDL companies, to assist us with sales tax projections and with sales tax tracking, that sort of thing. They have a fairly rigorous program where they make projections on behalf of, oh, gosh, I think they have over 400 clients. And they, they essentially bring those projections to city staff, and they show us their assumptions as far as new business, such as Walmart, Super Walmart opening up, other retail businesses that they're aware of, that we've made them aware of. And they sort of invite city staff to challenge them on their assumptions. And because they have so many clients throughout the state and throughout the nation, really, they're able to accurately predict how much, you know, a certain store of a certain size will bring into the city. They look at the surrounding areas. It's a very detailed program. It costs us literally $650 a month to get that service. It's worth every penny. We would have to pay someone, essentially a full-time analyst, to do the level of detail that they're doing for us. They also, I think, ultimately will factor in some sales tax changes, where part of the way they make their dollars is in finding businesses who are physically located in Victorville and should be reporting as a Victorville address, but for some reason, whether it's purposeful or in error, actually reporting in another city. And so that other city is getting the benefit of those sales tax dollars. They have, their contract, which was approved by this council, includes a 15% cut of any of those changes that they're able to find. So Dale Mosier, the Assistant Director of Finance, and I sat down with them, and we scrutinized their numbers. They're very proud of the work that they do. They're very accurate. They have an accuracy goal of 2%, and within 2%, and they typically beat that, and are 1% or less. So, sales tax is budgeted essentially as spot-on as we can. We've done that with a number of our revenue codes for a couple of years now, especially as we were laying employees off. We didn't want to be overly conservative and, you know, figure out that, you know, well, we think it's going to be, say, $10 million, but let's budget nine so that we can make sure that we make it. You know, in normal times, that's what you would do, so that you can make sure that you're going to make it. But when that extra million dollars that you probably will end up receiving equals, you know, 12 to 15 employees who need to be laid off, if you don't budget those revenues appropriately, you know, it's something that we've been very diligent about, trying to be as accurate as possible. And, you know, staff has been very accurate in those numbers in the past.
You have confidence. That's a long way of saying you've got confidence in that number.
I have confidence in that number, yes. This council's decisions and the planning commission's decisions to bring new business to this city helps boost those revenues.
Last thing I'd like to comment on, just like to expand a little bit on what Angela brought up, because I think it's a really important point dealing with the county on this cost allocation plan. I've been working with cost allocation plans for years, and I can tell you, every one of them is imperfect. They're not scientific. They're artistry. They're based on assumptions and all kinds of estimating. And I don't think we want to tell the sheriff that, no, we don't want to contract with you. That's not what I would ever suggest, because I don't want a police department. I compare Rancho and Fontana, if you want to understand that difference. But I think we can put his feet to the fire and say, you must explain this, you must justify it, because I got to go back to my council and convince them they ought to pay it. And just press them. Just don't let them cruise by you.
I did not watch the supervisors' meeting. I don't typically. And actually, was a little bit surprised by their decision. But as I understand it, there is a move afoot to sort of better analyze that CalCap program altogether. We have a cost allocation plan ourselves. That's one of the, one of the risks that I mentioned. And, you know, if our, if our departments and districts were, had separate boards, they might be having a very similar conversation right now, saying that, you know, the cost allocation plan is, you know, overcharging, you know, the district or the department or this department or whatever. So it is definitely an art. You know, I know that we've, our consultant is, you know, doing everything they can to make it as fair as possible. But when you're getting those bills, as we do from the county, any dollar seems unfair when it goes up.
I think the county is just doing what the state's been doing, looking for someplace to balance its budget, because it won't impose the kind of discipline that we've imposed in the city of Victorville. Neither one of them will do that.
The discussion at that city manager's meeting with the, with the county CEO essentially went to the history of that CalCap program. And there was some fear that, you know, the 5% wasn't even enough in and of itself, that when the study was done, it was actually done many years ago at the request of the cities, because the cities felt like they were being overcharged. So the cities all put in money to study the cost allocation plan. And ultimately, the plan that the cities paid for showed that the county should be charging even more, as high as 6%. So there is some risk that, you know, if we push too hard, depending on, you know, who the consultant is, who hires the consultant, those costs could ultimately come in higher.
County, how many worked with the consultant?
Yeah, I don't, I wasn't around back then. I think it was in '95.
Well, the beauty of this is, we'll get to discuss this all again next Thursday, so I would invite you all back. But the other beauty of budgets is they're not written in stone or granite, which we have up here. They can be changed, they can be adjusted, and if need be, that's what happens during the fiscal year. So with that, I think you've received clear direction from this council that, that 75 million you stated that we have.
I wish. If the Carter-Burgess case takes, case takes long enough, it'll get up there.
Yeah, right. 75,000 go back into reserves. And if you could bring that back to us and maybe address some of the concerns of the council.
Ryan, if some of that is the point that Norm brought up about the, was Granicus what's doing the streaming or no?
Granicus does the streaming, yes. It's hosted at their website. That's correct.
Well, that might be something we would want to look at.
Well, and it could be. I just, at this point in time, I don't know that we want to make that decision.
The item that I put up there would not do anything for the streaming. That's more of an internal staff issue.
Okay. So it doesn't improve?
Wouldn't improve.
And, and this could definitely go to whoever the user is and the type of service they have through whatever their provider is.
In this case, I would guarantee you that Mr. Miller's issue is simply with the electronic pipeline going from his service provider to his house. It's just not big enough to handle a video stream, so.
I don't think we answered the question regarding the strategic review with the board with the $10,000. I believe that for the new sitting board that we should have that, but I don't think that we should pay for the $10,000. I know that the college did one, and they just, they got Dale Marsden, and he did it for free. So I'm sure there's people out there in the community, and he was really great. I don't know if he would do it again, but, I mean, he was really great.
I think he would. He and I have talked about it. I didn't know. I didn't ask him a price or anything. It's been easily a year ago.
I'm pretty sure he did it for free at the college. So, and I think that would be good because, you know, I don't know if a lot of people know, but we don't even have a mission statement. We don't even know, we don't have goals set. We have nothing for the city, which is ridiculous. So how do you lead without knowing where you're going? So we do need to get that done. And we didn't address that. So is the board okay with that?
Well, and you and I talked about that. And I think from my perspective, I would like to explore the opportunity of being able to get someone like a Dale Marsden, or someone of his caliber, or anybody that could potentially come in and facilitate that type of goal-setting, team-building, that type of thing. I think it would be appropriate after the November election, so depending upon what happens there. But if we can get it for free, instead of having to pay for it.
Yeah, that would be great. Something Angela and I had talked about when I met with her individually on the goals, you know, possibly trying to do that.
I just wanted to say one last thing, is that when I was talking about the fee increase for San Bernardino County, I didn't mean to imply that we're not going to have a sheriff's department. That's just ridiculous. I mean, you know, I don't understand who gave him that much authority that he would be over the board of supervisors. I don't understand that. So that's, that's my issue, is we need to separate it out. I mean, he's, he's putting the screws to us that affects the sheriff's department, and that's not right. We don't want to cut more officers out to make that fee, you know, like, like Mr. Kennedy said, they need to explain it.
I agree. And actually, Mr. Deveraux isn't over the board of supervisors. He has this, apparently he had this in his proposed budget, and they're in the process of approving that budget. So just like our item is here today, it's a very similar relationship. Hakeem?
Real quick, if you could.
Real quick. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, because we're going to be doing this next Thursday again, so.
To a few quick points. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council for hearing me. Strangely, I was sitting here listening to you guys, and I saw a quote from, of all people, Vice President Biden. And I know that some of my family and friends are looking at me wondering why would I bring his, a quote from the Vice President up. But this quote was, "Show me your budget, and I'll show you what you value," or something to that effect. And so I wanted you guys to kind of keep that in mind. The June 28th meeting, I would hope that workshop would be done, the whole budget process. I don't know if it is done or would be done in partnership, inviting all the stakeholders there, having it to where the stakeholders can participate, the sheriff's department, the youth and all that, to participate and give feedback. The next point was the fire contract was going up, and Mr. Robertson said that the prevention, the prevention portion was going up. I would hope that they would have like a written plan to go out to the schools and really promote fire prevention education, but like a written plan. If we have to pay for it already, let's try to get some type of education for, more education for our children. And the last point was, I really liked the goal-setting idea. I think it's a really good idea. It helps focus where we, it helps acknowledge where we were, where we are, and where we want to be. Thank you for hearing me.
Hakeem, thank you for making sure that you didn't use the other famous quote from our famous Vice President. And to the, to the federal and state level, if they could pass their own budgets, it'd be a miracle. So, anyway, we will have, we will, after we have the rest of the agenda items, we will adjourn this meeting to 5:00 PM on Thursday, June 28th. But with that, we'll go into council committee reports. I'll start with Council Member Rothschild.
VVTAs is providing service to Fort Irwin. VVTAs, Victor Valley Transit Authority, is providing service to Fort Irwin. They carried over 800 passengers and has been received very well. And the finishing of the construction project has been turned over to a surety bond company, and a new general contractor, Vertex, has taken over.
Finishing the construction job. I guess there was issues with that.
All right. All right. I don't have anything with respect to Sandbag, other than to say, if you continue to drive along the 15 freeway, Amargosa, Mariposa, please drive safely. We have a lot of construction crews out there building the interchange. And, you know, I don't think enough people know to slow down when they're driving around construction crews. So please drive safely around that interchange.
They're going real.
They are moving quickly. Let's just say that. All right. Council reports, discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agendas.
I would like to propose agendizing, getting more alternates for the committees. Is that what I was supposed to say?
Yeah, we talked about this earlier, just in the case where we have a primary and then an alternate, and neither one of them can make it, allowing either the mayor or the mayor to send some, one of the council members. And is that kind of the gist of what we were discussing earlier, Andre?
Yeah, my understanding is you're looking to look at a policy whereby in the event that the... that the designated member of a committee cannot make it, or the alternate cannot make it, that the mayor would then have the ability to designate a replacement, either a council member or perhaps even a staff member, to be able to fill those vacancies.
Okay, so that is just a suggestion that it come back to this council for discussion and ultimate adoption if it's so approved. Are you all okay with that? Anything else?
That was it.
All right. I don't have anything, so reports from staff and council members. Mr. Roberson?
I think I've said enough already.
Ms. Fias, anything else? All right. I have nothing else as well, so we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting to 5:00 PM on Thursday, June 28th, 2012, for the purpose of conducting a closed session, budget workshop, and public hearing for adoption of the budget for 2012-2013 fiscal year.